Ms. White, second to my Ms. Lewis to come out of the executive session. No action was taken. Do I hear a motion to approve the executive session minutes as read?
I make a motion to approve, to accept the executive session minutes as read.
Motion of Mr. Long, your second.
I'll second.
Second to my Ms. Lewis. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Five, none opposed, motion carries. Next item will be the approval of the amended Personnel Action Report. Do I hear a motion to approve the amended Personnel Action Report?
I make a motion to approve the Personnel Action Report as amended. I'll second.
Motion of my Ms. Lewis. Second to my Ms. White. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Five, none opposed, motion carries. Next will be Ms. Fowler. Recognition of Pickens County Middle School as a Lighthouse School to Watch.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to tell you about the Lighthouse Schools to Watch designation. Georgia Lighthouse Schools to Watch is a state-level recognition that seeks to identify high-performing middle-grade schools in our state. Georgia is one of 18 states that have qualified to be part of the prestigious National Foreign Schools to Watch Program. This program annually identifies schools across the country that are committed to a journey of excellence centered around four program domains. Those domains are academic excellence, developmental responsiveness, social equity, and organizational structures and processes. At this time, there are only 17 schools in the state of Georgia that have met this criteria. So that's less than 4% of the middle schools in the state are designated Georgia Lighthouse Schools to Watch. Once you're identified as a school to watch, every three years you have to reapply or have to apply for redesignation. And there is a site visit, a team comes in, spends the day observing pretty much every class in the school, and interviewing students and teachers and administrators. Some of the common characteristics of Lighthouse Schools to Watch include challenging curriculum for all students, an active learning environment, data-driven decision-making resulting in increased academic achievement, student-centered approach to instruction, equal opportunities for all students, positive, happy, involved students, a culture of advocacy in which all students are known and valued, a high level of faculty commitment, and a visionary leadership. After the visit, we, which I think ours was in October, we didn't get our report until late November, and it was a six-page summary report of their visit. And the report lists strengths and we, or strengths and areas for growth in each of the domains. And they also give an update on the growth they've seen since their last visit. Some of the comments listed in the report are: High-quality instruction was pervasive at each grade level and in every discipline. High levels of instruction was evident in every classroom. During classroom visits, a high level of active student learning was observed. Teachers used diverse learning strategies to promote student achievement. Teachers were enthusiastic and positive in their interactions with students. There is a strong sense of caring and concern among teachers. In visiting classrooms, it was impressive to experience the presence of student voice, the high level of questioning, and the absence of worksheets. Essential questions and questions of the day were thoughtful and challenging. Teachers were asking students, "Why? How do you know? What evidence do you have?" Students with learning differences are exposed to the same content and learning activities as general education students. One of the members of our team was a college professor that in middle grades education. And she told me that she took pictures of some of the essential questions and questions of the day because she wanted to take them back for her students to see what they were supposed to look like. And another one of the team members told me that at the last visit, they saw some good things going on. And that this time, they saw many, many good things going on in classrooms. So it was an excellent visit, an excellent report. PCMS will be recognized at the National Forums Schools to Watch Annual Conference in Washington DC in June. So I am very proud of the students, the faculty, and the staff at PCMS. And it has certainly been my privilege and honor to get to work with them for the past four years. Thank you.
I do have copies of the full report if any of you would like to call it, I'd be glad to give you one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Everybody who's gonna have some recognition, is everybody here before we move on? We're starting a little bit early, but as long as everybody's here, we'll go ahead and start into the recognition. First will be the recognition of student achievement. Eli Galligan.
Yes, thank you for letting us be here tonight. I want to introduce our band director, Mr. Steven Watson, because he's part of the reason that we have this exceptional band student. He's helped to mold him into the musician that he is, so I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Watson.
Good evening, thank you for this opportunity, Eli. If you'll go ahead and make your way forward. While he's coming up, Eli began this journey back in December when he auditioned for the Ninth District Band, where he scored a 99.5 out of a possible 100 points. And ended up being first chair in the Ninth District Honor Band. For us non-band folks, that means he was the very best one in the Ninth District. After that, he went in January and auditioned for the All-State Band and ended up first chair in the All-State Band as well. So we would like to present Eli with this as Red Reed's Certificate of Musical Excellence, presented to Eli Galligan in recognition of your outstanding work in consistent pursuit of excellence in music performance and for representing Jasper Middle School and the Georgia Music Educators Association All-State Band.
Next will be Pickens County Middle School Honor Band.
Mr. Smith will be making our presentations.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for having me out here tonight. I really love what I do, and I appreciate the opportunity to be against my students musically every day. Today I get to recognize two very hard-working and intelligent students that I've worked, that have worked hard to achieve a commendable goal. These students went through a rigorous audition process against several counties in our region, and they performed in our district's honor bands and represented Pickens County very well. First, I want to recognize Piper Duncan, who's a great Oboist, and she couldn't be here tonight due to illness. And second, I'd like to recognize Jonah Oob, who is here tonight, who's a great tuba player and represented us very well.
Next will be Ms. Reed, Pickens County Middle School Honor Band.
I'm gonna have an introduction from Mr. Wallace, he can give me one.
We need no introduction.
Definitely not. Well, good evening, thank you for letting us do this. Every year, the Pickens County School Band has many students audition for the district honor band and for a chance at All-State, as they said. The state is divided into districts, and our district includes Forsyth, Cherokee, Pickens, Gilmer, Fannin, Dawson, Lumpkin, Towns, Union, and White Counties. We had 25 students audition at the first-round auditions hosted at our high school in December. Seven advanced to the first-round audition, and we'll have them come up first. This first group, there was 847 students that auditioned for this, by the way. And these seven advanced to the second round. Dalton Crowe, bassoon. Jared Davis is homesick, he, the allergies got him. Luis Gonzalez, trombone. Blue Goodman, trombone. Y'all come on right up there. And I'll get this team in just a second. Kayla Roberts, flute, she cannot be here tonight. Dale Smith percussion, and Connor Williams tuba. If you would, give them a round of applause, please. And they can actually stay up there for the next bunch as well. Okay, and then y'all stay up there, because the next bunch is coming. Once the results came out, the district honor band was selected from those scores. Some were automatically advanced, some were also placed in a district honor band. For the 11-12 honor band, we had Dalton Crowe, come on up and grab this. Blue Goodman. Dalton was first chair bassoon in our district. Blue Goodman was first chair trombone in our district. Others included Joseph Angelo Santi, tuba. Dale Smith percussion, and Kayla Roberts as well. And then out of the 9-10 honor band, we had Natalie Giddens flute, and Connor Williams tuba. And then out of the clinic band, we had Faith Dement trumpet, Luis Gonzalez trumpet, and Jared Davis again. And these are members of the district honor band. Trump, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Same thing, Brass Family, closing up. I should probably know that. All right, and congratulations all of you for making district honor band. And finally, the second round level, the second round level is held down in Houston County. Over 1,100 students tried out for All-State Band, about 200 of them were flute. And two of the Rs were selected, okay? They spent the first weekend of March in Athens, Georgia for a three-day event with national clinicians. These students were Blue Goodman trombone and Dale Smith percussion. We do appreciate your, the ability to recognize our students here. Thank you.
Next will be Jasper Elementary School students winner of the ETC Edine Education Grant.
I'm Dave Wise, I'm the principal of Jasper Elementary. And like you said, each year, ETC offers opportunities for teachers to write grants to get money for our school. And this year, it was Tracy Buckingham, and her crew had $1,000 to $10,000 from ETC. So I'll let Trace, turn it over to Tracy for her little presentation.
Hello, I am in awe that I'm standing in front of you to report that a group of students from Jasper Elementary School won $10,500 to help their fellow peers see the world in a whole different way. When this process started, we were unaware that we would be restructuring the school system. Therefore, it was all done with Jasper Elementary School initially in mind. However, now we know that JES will become JMS, and this was written to benefit elementary school students. Therefore, the new classroom that's listed in this project will be at Harmony Elementary School, where I will be stationed next year. I've already discussed this project with Mr. Thompson, and he's excited about the possibilities. But since his team will be going in different directions next year, we have decided that we're gonna go ahead and be in talks with the Atlanta Center for Puppetry Arts so that they can come before the end of the school year and benefit all the students that participated. But instead of me doing all the talking, I thought it would be best to let the experts do it. Isabella?
Dr. Wilson School Board members and guests, we are here today to tell you about how we won the ETC grant.
You get to do it again, Isabella. This time on my own.
Do I say it again? Oh, okay. Dr. Wilson School Board members and guests, we are here today to tell you about how we won the ETC grant.
Now, we prepared a video for you to watch, it's very short. They love being on camera. As you can see, we've got some actors and actresses here. But I think there's something very important you should know about this group. In 29 years of teaching, I'm amazed by the abilities and talents of this group of young people. They really have an unbelievable amount of talent. Matthew Barone, if you'll come to the front, please. Matthew, can you tell them what is so special about this group?
I forgot.
How about 70%?
70% of us.
It's okay, speak. You speak what? Two. Speak two languages. 70% of this group, English is not their first language. And they competed against all native English speakers and still came out on top. I think that's an amazing fact to know. That's right, this group had to memorize a large amount of text, five minutes worth. And they did it with many of them being second-language learners. Now, with your permission, this little group of actors and actresses has a little video to explain our project.
Hi, my name is Fernanda, this is my friend Aurora. We are a part of ETC Edine Competition Team from Jasper Elementary School. We made a little video to help you understand the idea behind our project and why it was a winning idea.
Do you know what he said?
Well, I do, and that's exactly the point of our conversation tonight. The importance of learning different languages and different cultures.
Good evening, my name is Sophia Scott, and I am a student at Jasper Elementary School in fourth grade. My mom is from Medellin, Colombia, and I am bilingual too. Knowing about different parts of the world is a way of life for me, but I think it's important for all students.
If you want to see us change the world, we've got to know about it first. That's why we wanted to create an international studies program.
I think this whole idea was kind of my fault, because Miss Tracy would come to my room every day in kindergarten class, and I always say, "I'm going to go, I'm going to go," but my friend told me, "No, because you don't speak Spanish." But I told her right quick, "I want to learn another language, seriously, isn't that enough?"
So that is what gave Miss Tracy the idea. But Miss Tracy's big ideas required a lot of money. So she had to wait for the opportunity to get the money.
Did I hear someone say some money?
$1,500.
Wow, that will buy a lot of candy.
Girls, this is not about candy. Keep focus. So how does all this work? How do we put the whole world in just one classroom?
This way, we call it Kaleidoscope Kingdom.
This room would have little passport kits for teachers.
These teachers could use these kits to teach us about different places.
We will look at the world through culture, art, music, and language. Listening centers to listen for music all over the world. And art centers to study art from people all over the world.
I'm reading the art picture, I have to look at it, I lost it.
Hey, wait, you haven't talked about the best part.
The puppets.
I can't wait to see the puppets from this place.
That is so cool. Not boring like reading a textbook.
You don't have a suitcase, no problem. Here, ready for learning adventure. Puppets, music, art, and learning other languages on iPad. What more could a kid want? I'm a Kaleidoscope Kingdom kid.
Hi guys, my name is Sophia Scott, and I'm in fourth grade.
Hi, I'm Aurora, and I'm a fourth grader.
Hi, my name is Fernanda, and I'm in fourth grade.
Matthew Barone, first grade.
Isn't that a big drum, first grade?
Mary Diana, now in first grade.
My name is Mary Catherine, I'm in first grade.
Hi, I'm Jacqueline, I'm in eighth grade.
Hi, I'm Casey, and I'm in second grade.
My name is Taylor, and I'm in fourth grade.
So as you can see, this project had two parts. We had some older students who helped us with phase one, which was the commercial. That got us to the finals. And then our first graders did the live presentation televised and in front of judges. I would like to recognize all students who participated now with this certificate. Sophia Scott. Aurora Berber. Casey Villalobos. Jacqueline Salto. Matthew Barone. Isabella Betrom. Tatum Fannin. Mary Catherine Neal. Mary Diana Valdivinos. And we have one other student who I do not believe made it in tonight, her name was Fernando Rodriguez. Okay, guys, everybody looking forward. I want you to hold your certificates up, but not in front of your face, because your face is too beautiful. Put your certificate right here, Mary Catherine, good. Matthew down, thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Next will be Pickens County Middle School students, also winners of the ETC Edine Education Grant.
Looking for Dr. Pullen, I know the students were planning on being here. They just went back out, yeah. Okay, Dr. Pullen, students, are any of you here yet? They did win $500, they were finalists for a grant, and did a wonderful presentation on aquaponics. So we had three eighth-grade students and two seventh-grade students who did the presentation. The eighth graders were Jordan Dean, Addison Dockery, and Jacob Dorsey. The seventh-grade students, Cole Law and Brody Lee. And they did a fabulous job and great presentation. And I think we were all just delighted to know that Pickens County brought home the big bucks. So we were excited for Tracy's students, and we were very proud of ours for winning the $500.
It's hard to follow that.
Oh, really? You're gonna have to sing or dance or sing.
You have a video and I'm like, nothing I want to say.
You just got to stay up to game. Yeah, I hate to tell you, you're not gonna beat that.
Yeah, there's not much beating that. Thank you, Miss Buckingham, that was awesome.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next superintendent reports.
Mr. Chairman, first up, financial, Ms. Smith.
Hey, you don't want to follow that either. Martha and I didn't threaten to sing, but that's probably not a good idea. Martha's got our general fund report, I'm putting the microphone down. We have collected seventy-seven point two-two percent of our budgeted revenue as of April sixth with ninety-one point nine-five percent collection on our property taxes, so we're faring pretty well there. Of course, we'd like to see the rest of that one point seven million dollars come in before the end of August. We've expended, I'm gonna have to invest in some reading glasses here soon folks, sixty point four-four percent of our budgeted expenditures. During spring break, I actually ran all of our salaries and benefits and expected expenditures out through the rest of the year, unless there is a change that comes up that surprises me. I only know of one budget amendment we need to do and it has to do with a new account number that has been given to us by the state of Georgia or the Department of Education, so we will have that sometime in the next couple of months. But everybody's in line or everything looks very good, nobody, there's no shortfall, no problem. It's just moving something from one section to another based on a new definition, so everything looks really good in general fund. Georgia Department of Audit has let me know they'll be joining us probably mid-May. They usually are with us two to three weeks and then they do another four or five weeks off-site, so we look forward to that. For the month of March, we received revenue of three hundred thirty-six thousand, three hundred seventy dollars and eighty-three cents, plus revenue earned interest of three thousand nine hundred fifty dollars and eighty cents. Just want to let you know our bank very graciously increased our interest rate to half a percent and that does actually make a big difference when it comes to money, this type of money sitting in an account as our projects are getting going lately. We had three expenditures, you can see there, architectural work for the Love and Center at Pickens High. We had some docks, laptops and speakers at various locations and the first installment of our radio system and that is going across all locations. That brought the balance at the end of March to nine million, eight hundred twenty-eight thousand, six hundred fifty-nine dollars and sixteen cents. And then of course we have our Splos collection. We're still hanging in there, that twelve-month average is about three hundred and eighty-six thousand, we like keeping that number. This month was a little lower, but we'll take that and hope those higher numbers keep coming in. Do you have any questions? That's all I have there.
Ms. Kentrow?
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank Mr. Bale for that good um and prayer. I appreciate that very much and I think probably behalf of our school system, I think we all appreciate knowing that we have a very caring and praying board and that's what we, that's what we gotta have, that's what gets us through every day. So again, thank you for that. And I want to say, Ms. Buckingham has already left, but on behalf of her and her group, that was awesome. That just made my day. Isabella is precious, I wish that we could have her come to the Board of Education office occasionally, Dr. Wilson, and maybe, you know, instead of like pet therapy, maybe we could have Isabella therapy as we, you know, have been discussing, so just keep that in mind. Yeah, she's a happy little girl, I mean, who couldn't be happy with her around?
I'm just afraid Martha and Amy are gonna start singing to the rest of it.
And when the singing, the dancing starts, then you can look out. But I do appreciate everyone, I do appreciate what all of you do. I know I don't say that enough, but I wanted to, again, to tell you thank you. For the attendance information, I will start out with the school's attendance and would like to congratulate Dr. David Wilds of Jasper Elementary School. Dr. Wilds, ninety-six point five-nine percent. And I'm gonna put Ms. Fowler on the spot because she did not bring the banner last month and she did not get her picture made, so Ms. Fowler, you have to come and help Dr. Wilds hold the banner. So we can get a picture. And Dr. Wilds, we do have a certificate to take back to your school. Go back and.
Sing and dance.
You're singing and dancing, that's it. Let's give them a big round of applause. Awesome job, thank you. Now for the staff attendance award. Curtis Wallace, I know you've had it for three months in a row, but guess what? Jasper Middle School, Anita Walker, come on up and say it. Ninety-seven point two-eight percent. Congratulations. And she can do the dance routine tomorrow with her staff. For the dropout information, I think we're looking at, total was eleven. And we've had three for the month of March. Last year our total was nine, so we are a little, little bit above where our end of the year was, but we're still working and we will continue to work on these numbers as always. Any of you have any questions about any of their reports? Thank you so much.
I'm being Stacy tonight. Good evening, see if I can read his notes on this wonderful technology. The maintenance, oh, that's much better. Maintenance has been preparing for the summer, moving and work, they are, the new scoreboard is in and operational. The lighting for the football field is completed and looks great. The turf and track upgrades are in full swing and on schedule to be completed before school is out, and we have a big deadline coming up on that one, so they're on schedule for that. Questions regarding maintenance? I don't know if I can answer them, but I'll make them up.
Somebody ask him a question.
They use hammer and mams. Transportation, the rodeo is this Saturday, come by nine to twelve, and I believe, I don't know if they're still looking for judges, but I know it's a, it's a good, it's a good time, I did it in at least one year, so if the weather's nice, I'll be there again. Saturday morning's supposed to be nice. We have our annual preschool bus training this month. They're still looking for school bus, sub-drivers and they're down to two subs now, so they are eating bushes and looking for people to drive buses. And next class for training is April twenty-second and they have one person signed up so far. So if you know anybody that wants to drive a bus, if you know anybody that wants to drive a bus, let us know. And the state DMV school bus safety unit inspections are coming up at the end of the month for all buses. The SRO report for this month, PHS, there were two males arrested for an affray. Could be a tussle, could be, I don't know. One male drug charge and there was a vehicle accident, there were two vehicle accidents. The truancy has been pretty busy, there were eight citations issued for parent responsibility. Canine searches at PHS, forty-two vehicles were searched and twelve classrooms were searched. And nothing was noted here, so I assume nothing was known, that's a good thing. And food services, school lunch hero day will be celebrated May fourth, right? And it will kick off the celebration for the school nutrition employee week, May seventh through the eleventh. It's the perfect opportunity to recognize the hard-working school nutrition staff that make a difference for every child who comes through the cafeteria. They truly are heroes that help build children ready to learn. Thank you, Beth. Thank you, Beth. So I can answer questions if you want. No? Thank you.
Okay, it says to action items. Next will be the approval of voting delegate and alternate at the GSBA Summer Conference and Delegate Assembly. For the board, I will be available and Ms. White will be available.
I would like to nominate Catherine White as our delegate and Daniel as our alternate.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Lewis. Seconded by Mr. Long. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Five-oh. Motion carries. Next will be approval of minutes. I will make the motion to approve the minutes for the March eighth regular, March fourteenth, March twenty-eighth, and April the eleventh called board meetings. I hear a second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. White, any discussion? All in favor? Five opposed, motion carries. Next will be surplus from Hill City Elementary and the Georgia Learning Resource System. I have your motion to approve that.
You made a question, did we?
Motion by Ms. Lewis, seconded by Ms. White. Any discussion? All in favor? Five and opposed. Motion carries. Next, more comments.
Do we have the presentation that Miss Buckingham did, was that on our website? It was on YouTube.
It's on YouTube.
Yes, we can link to that, right? That was really pretty cool.
And they did an actually, a different little thing for the judges, right? That was just their little advertisement for, for us. I'd like to see both of them too. I mean, that's all done, but that would be neat to be on our website also. Very proud of that.
Chattahoochee Tech hosted a senior day on March thirtieth where we had high school students come over. Pickens High, I think, had somewhere between three and ten students come over. Truly good day. Of course, this is just a comment, just point, but I'd like for us to discuss sometime for next year, maybe having a career week. I know we have some of our elementary schools very active and trying to get community and businesses to come in and I think that we can improve on getting some career initiatives even into our elementary schools if we would collaborate together and create a week possibly. Look at that, maybe after testing or something where it's, it's the least intrusive into, you know, school. And we also, I know some of our, on our senior days, I think Pickens High got, you get so many, so many invites based on how Chattahoochee Tech budgets for food, you have to feed the students and, and I didn't realize that. And I know that if we get more involved in doing that, I'd like to get the industry to have fund some of the food so that there's not a budget restraint that could potentially restrict some students from coming over. And also too, I know we didn't have transportation, bring them over, and I understood we had some students left behind that didn't have transportation coming over, so we'll make sure we got a bus or something that can bring them over next year. That's a good day, it's a really good day when they come in. It's amazing to see kids that, we see kids' eyes open when they come in and see different opportunities.
Any other comments?
Just that you have a few short weeks left till the end of the year, so hang tight and are awesome and can't wait to see all the great progress that every school's made. I'm excited for next year, what we have in store, so thanks for all your hard work thus far. Teachers, administrators, it's.
What day is it?
Couple of, couple, I think we're all counting them down, not out loud though.
And we also, I want to announce too, that next Tuesday night at six-thirty at Chattahoochee Tech, we're gonna have a, a meeting and we're gonna discuss some things that regarding school finance, things that we hear that's not exactly accurate, try to clarify some things and some information that will help people in some of the decision-making that will be coming up with the, some of the tax exemptions and stuff like that, so I've got some, a presentation I'm gonna present, so invite everybody that's interested, I think it's gonna be some good information that you'd be interested in all about. Six-thirty at Chattahoochee Tech. Anything else?
So we're Pickens County dragging a tire.
Okay, next will be to adjourn, do I hear motion to adjourn?
I would be glad to make a motion to adjourn.
Long, seconded by.
Catherine.
Ms. White. Any discussion? All in favor? Five and opposed, motion carries, we are adjourned.